A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, as the law has been properly posted pursuant to the match federal laws and the bylaws of the town of Granby.
Yes, the House.
Please rise as Select Board Chairman Glenn Sexton leads us at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sitting tonight on the stage in the front are your Finance Committee, Town Clerk, Town Attorney, Town Administrator, and your Select Board. Please raise your hand if you'd like to comment or discuss a motion. When I recognize you, please come up to the microphone in the center of the gym, or if you can't come to the microphone, raise your hand and I'll have a runner come to you. You must state your name and address before you discuss any of the motions being presented. Please direct your discussion towards me, and I will direct it towards the appropriate person at town meeting. And lastly, if you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the non-voter area to the right. One more thing, in your handouts tonight is a new amendment handout, which should help you if you want to amend any of the motions. You can write on one side and present it to me as your amendment. Before we begin again with town meeting, let's talk about the clickers. Tonight, we're going to be using the clickers for all of the articles, because it's a short meeting and there's only 10 articles, so it won't take up too much time. I think there's some new people here tonight, so I'll explain again how the clickers work. You'll have 20 seconds, when I tell you the votes open, to select green for yes, if you agree, or red for no, if you don't agree. During those 20 seconds, you can switch your choice back and forth as many times as you want, but when the 20 seconds are up, the last thing you pressed is what's going to be recorded. So I will tell you when to vote, 20 seconds, the voting will close, and then I will announce the results. If you need to leave the auditorium, please hand your clicker to one of the workers at the door, and then, when you come back in, they will hand it back to you. Please do not leave the gym with your clicker, and do not go home with your clicker. The clicker only works in the gym for this town meeting. So at the end of town meeting, there will be people at the doors to collect your clickers. So, we'll do a test question, since there's some new people here, just so you get familiar with your clicker. And the test question tonight... I'm connecting to the partner, hold on. (pause) That's weird. Okay, something.
Easy.
Mm-hmm.
DJ.
DJ?
Nope.
Back in. All right, we timed out. Okay, so I'm back in. Tonight's question is going to be, "I want Tom Brady to come back to the New England Patriots." So get your clickers ready.
All right, people are already voting. People are already...
All right, you're already voting, hold on. Now you start voting. Look at that, we have a tie.[283.12][283.12](laughing) 20 yes and 20 no. Who would've thought? We have 40 people here.
I guess, wow.
All right, so there you go, that's how you use your clickers, very fun. So for every article tonight, we will be using our clickers. So now the moderator will recognize, Select Board Chair Glenn Sexton, to present the motion under Article 1.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 011415112000 to the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of installing and upgrading the Vision software to the Assessors Department.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can you hear Mr. Sexton?
(inaudible).
Put the mic closer to your mouth.
Is that better?
Nope, closer.
Wait for it.
Closer.
Is that better?
Little better, closer. I know.
Is it on?
There you go.
I was just hearing your voice, I think.
That's it. All right, so there's a second for Article 1. Is there any discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Robert Glessman, is the mic on?
Yep.
Yep, okay. 37 North Street, for the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is recommending that all the first nine articles be approved. The first eight are all items that were really unforeseen when the budgets were prepared a year ago, and the final one, number nine, dealing with the money spent on the water line on 202. Remember, we voted at annual town meeting to no longer borrow the money, so we needed to find a proper account to pay the engineering work that was done.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion under Article 1? Come on up.
Abelson 134 Cold Hill, perhaps someone could tell us what Vision software is?
So, the Vision system that we have right now for the software, we have for the Assessors Department, is currently, it's Vision 6, and they're upgrading to Vision 8. So, they need to do this upgrade, so that the system will support the new changes to it.
Does that answer your question? Hold on.
Mr. Abelson, the Vision software is the software used by the Assessors Department in order to properly value all the property in the town of Granby, and to properly code it, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial. And also, it is used to record any building permits that are done on your building, to properly reflect what the current property is and what the current value should be.
Thank you. Any further questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority, so get ready, I'll tell you when to start pressing. All right, time's up. The motion passes by a majority, 29 to 2. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 2.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 01122512000 to the sum of $15, oh, sorry, $15,000 for the purpose of making repairs on the council of aging and public safety complex water systems.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
The article is to cover the cost of repairs to the wells at the counseling of aging in the water system at the public safety complex. It has been discovered that there's been fractures in the well casing, which is allowing the water to enter from the well, causing bacterial issues. The town just recently received permission from DEP to allow to install a seal on the well to address this issue. The cost is approximately $5,000. The water system at the public safety complex has also been having bacterial issues. The proposed corrective action is to reconfigure the existing piping to create a filter, backwash, and replacement media and current filtration system. The cost for this is approximately $10,000.
Are there any questions? All right, this must pass by a majority. Are you ready with your clickers? And time's up. The motion passes by a majority, 46 yes, 3 no. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 3.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 011945480000 to the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of funding the Public Buildings Department expense budget for fiscal year 2022.
Second?
Second.
End discussion.
This article is to fund the public building expense budget to the cost of overruns due to the water issues at the council of aging in the public safety complex, along with the need to replace the well pump at the public safety complex due to power issues. This is being funded by excess funds in the gasoline budget.
Are there any questions? All right, this must also pass by a majority. Time's up. The motion passes by a majority, 36 to 3. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion on Article 4.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 01194548000 to the sum of $4,000 for the purpose of funding the Audit Department expense budget for fiscal year 2022.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This article is to fund the additional costs of having to conduct a single audit as a result of the COVID-related funding received by the town. Under federal statute, whenever a community receives more than $750,000 in federal funding through grants, a single audit is required. The town reached that level, so with this required, it was the cost and additional services required during the annual audit. This is being funded by excess funds in the gasoline budget.
Any questions? All right, in order for the motion under Article 4 to pass, it must pass by a majority. Start voting now. Wait a minute. We have a glitch. All right. Time's up. The motion passes by a majority, 46 to 3. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 5.
Madam Moderator, I vote to the town to transfer to account number 0191253000000 to the sum of $30,000 for a purpose of funding the legal department expense for budget fiscal year 2022.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This article is to fund the legal department expense budget to the cost overruns associated with unplanned labor issues and continuing court cases with the Granby Bow and Gun Club. This is being funded by excess funds in the workers' compensation budget.
Are there any further questions? Come on up, Mr. Abelson.
Abelson 134 Cold Hill, where do we stand with the Granby Gun Club? You say this requires additional funds, what's going on? How about an update?
Mr. Abelson, the, we finally had our day in court with the Granby Bow and Gun Club, and unfortunately, we lost in court, and therefore, the, all the restrictions that were put on the Granby Bow and Gun Club by a court order have been lifted, and we are required to rescind any and all prior conditions that we put on them to operate the Ranger.
Go ahead.
Joe Fernia 154 Taylor Street, with this $3,000, what are the unplanned labor issues that require a significant amount of money also? You reference in your comment unplanned labor issues. What are those unplanned labor issues?
Those are from the attorney fees that we had for our previous employees to settle things.
You mean the fire department? Or are there other issues beyond that?
There are other issues beyond that, but that's what the funds were for, related to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article 5, it must pass by a majority. Time's up. Passes by a majority, 36 to 9. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 6.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 011945481000 to the sum of $3,000 for the purpose of funding the Moderator Department expense budget for fiscal year 2022.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
This article is to fund the cost of renting electronic voting devices, which we're using this evening, to use at the annual town meeting, as well as this meeting here. This is being funded by the excess funds in our diesel budget.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Joe Fernia 154 Taylor Street, is the $3,000, does that give us access to this for a year, or is that only specifically for these two meetings?
Specifically for these two meetings.
Abelson 134 Cold Hill, $3,000 for these clickers for two meetings? Seems excessive.
That's the going rate. All the towns are paying the same rate for rentals.
Okay, I...
Wait, Mr. Martin wants to answer more to that.
Mr. Abelson, just to let you know, we were contemplating buying an electronic voting system. That would've cost us about $10,000. Prior to spending that type of money, we decided to try renting them for two meetings to see if it's a worthwhile investment on the part of the town moving forward, okay? We're looking at, based upon the number of people who are coming to town meetings, how complicated it is to use, things of that nature, and evaluating whether we want to go forward to actually purchase these units.
I see, so you have a plan to evaluate the efficacy of utilizing the clickers during these two meetings, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And that's available for us to look at, to understand what it is?
If you want, yes.
As was noted too by Mr. Martin, this became, we were looking at what other towns were doing from previous, some of the previous town meetings that we've had, that had a large attendance, and looking at ways that we could modify it to make it more, a quicker meeting, and also looking at a way to, if people wanted to protect the way they were voting. These are some of the things that were brought up by some of the residents when this first came about, so that's why we wanted to see how it would work. And as Mr. Martin talked about, that's something we will evaluate and decide whether or not, you know, it's worth it for us to move forward with it.
So, the three big things that you get with electronic clickers are speed, accuracy, and privacy. So sometimes people feel that they can't openly vote with their hand, and that's one of the big reasons why people are pushing for electronic voting. Any further questions? This motion must pass by a majority, so all those in favor? Hold on, we're waiting for the... All right, the voting's closed. The motion passes by a majority, 40 to 4. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 7.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the snow and ice expense budget to the sum of $40,000 for the purpose of funding the fire department expense budget for fiscal year 2022.
Second?
Second.
End discussion.
This article is to fund the costs associated with the fire department costs overruns due to staff shortages requiring filling the vacant shifts with overtime wages. The article is being funded with excess funds from the snow and ice expense budget. Madam Moderator, I'd like to actually amend Article 7.
So, I need the amendment in writing. And what is the amendment that you'd like?
I would like to delete the wording "fire department expenses" and change it to "fire department personnel services."
Okay. So I need a motion to stop debate, to discuss the amendment?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
So now the floor is opened up to discuss the amendment, which again, is deleting the words "fire department expense" and replacing them with "fire department personnel services." So is there a discussion or questions on that amendment?
Right, it's just basically a typo when the warrant was first put out, so that we need to change it to make sure that reflects the correct area it was coming from, oh, for.
So in order for the amendment to pass and be attached to the motion, we have to take a vote on the amendment, and it must be a majority to pass. So we're first going to vote on the amendment. So get your clickers ready and start voting now. The amendment passes by a majority, 49 to 1. So now we will go back to the main motion as amended and discuss that. Are there any questions on the main motion now, as amended? Go ahead.
Yes, in the personnel services, I guess, I understand that procedural technical thing, but what are or were the staff issues that required filling vacant shifts and overtime wages, and is this only for fire department employees, or is it for other department employees that filled the slot for something?
It is just for the fire department, people being out sick, people on vacation, just for shifts that ended up being open that they actually, they had to fill for coverage.
Okay, if I could ask a quick follow-up. So, for the coming year's budget that we voted on last time, does that mean that we understand where the money is, and so we don't expect this issue this year? Or do we expect this to be an ongoing issue?
I don't expect it to be an ongoing issue. If you remember, we had a fire chief in place, was the first time that she was doing a budget, so when she took her position, there were open vacancies that had to be filled for coverage, so that's what needed to take place. We had to provide coverage to the town, through the fire department. I don't think it's an ongoing issue. I think this is just, for instance, what happened this time around, just with a new fire chief, or temporary fire chief at that particular time with the budget, that's all.
Any further questions? In order for the motion as amended under Article 7 to pass, it must pass by a majority. So all those in favor, start voting now. Whether you're in favor or not, start voting. Okay, can you stop voting?
Go ahead.
All right, we're going to start that voting again, and... All right, voting is closed. The motion under Article 7 as amended passes by a majority, 52 to 3. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 9.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from retained earnings to the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of funding the ambulance department personal service budget for fiscal year 2022.
You said 9.
So, Mr. Sexton just read the motion under Article 8, which was correct, I called it 9. Right?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
A lot of stuff going on up here.
This article is to fund the costs associated with the fire department costs overruns due to staff shortages requiring filling with vacant shifts and overtime wages. The article is being funded with retained earnings from the ambulance department. This current balance is retaining earnings, the fund is $215,528.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Joe Fernia 154 Taylor, the $20,000 for personal services budget, how big is the personal services budget for FY 2022?
Mr. Fernia, just so you understand, when we...
Mr. Fernia, just, just so you understand, when we do with the personnel services and the fire department budget, for the career staff, which consists of five, fire, fire paramedics, their salaries or pays are broken down between fire department personal services and ambulance personal services. And that breakdown is seventy-five percent for fire and twenty-five percent for ambulance, based upon when we go back and did a historical look at the number of runs of the ambulance department in relation to, to the other time that they spent on eight or twelve hour shift, we came down with that percentage. So the forty thousand is seventy-five percent of the overrun, and the twenty thousand is the twenty percent of the overrun for FY 22.
Further questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article Eight, it must pass by a majority. Start voting. We're having a glitch again. Start voting. Voting is now closed. The motion under Article Eight passes by a majority forty-eight to three. The moderator now call Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Nine.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number zero-one-nine-one-two-five-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero to account number thirty-dash-one-two-two-dash-five-eight-zero-two. A R T S T M two-fourteen-nineteen, number six, the water main, the sum of sixty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, for the purpose of funding the costs associated with the Route Two-O-Two Water Main Project.
Second. Discussion.
The article is to fund the costs associated with design and engineering reviewed by the proposed water main project along Route Two-O-Two. This project currently has been delayed until a later date, additionally, the borrowing authorization for this project was rescinded at the annual town meeting. This fund, this is being funded by excesses, excess funds in the workman's compensation budget.
All right, Mr. Fernia.
Joe Fernia, one fifty-four Taylor Street. I know that two weeks ago, somebody tried to give sort of a complicated explanation. I'm just curious again, we're, we have to pay this money, and I guess so when we get back to the project again, we're going to have to probably hire somebody else again. So again, why was the project delayed until a later date?
It was based on cost. The amount that it was going to cost us to move forward with the project, as well as looking at what is needed for the town. It was based on what the cost, things have increased over the past couple of years, since we originally had the discussion of it.
And how much did that cost increase over, what was the original amount and how much did that cost increase? That caused us to pull out of the program, I guess.
Mr. Fernia, the, if you remember, the borrowing authorization we received for this project was one point two million dollars. When it went out to bid in conjunction with Mass DOT for their Route Two-O-Two project, our share of it became one point five million dollars, which was more than ten percent of the amount estimated by Mass DOT to complete our portion of the project. At that point, Mass DOT separated our portion from their portion, went out to rebid. Due to COVID and the issue with getting ductile pipe, in order to be able to complete our part of the project going forward, along with the current Route Two-O-Two project that's going on, there are delays of up to nine months in order to be able to get the pipe. And based upon that, we are not able to complete the project as Route, as Mass DOT is completing construction. And as everybody, or most people are well aware, that when Mass DOT does a road repavement project, or does any type of repavement on a road, there's a five-year moratorium before anybody can disturb that pavement.
So, just to be clear. I'm sorry, so just to be, so just to be clear, there's no chance of this project starting up again for at least five years, is that correct?
At least five years, so it's after the, the Mass DOT completes the paving of it, then it's five years from that date they complete the paving.
Any further questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article Nine, it must pass by a majority. Start voting now. Voting is closed. The motion passes by a majority thirty-seven to fourteen. The moderator will now call Ms. Nita Abbott to present the motion under Article Ten.
Nita Abbott, eleven Derbrock Drive, member of the planning board. Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume Three, Chapter Twenty-One, Zoning Bylaws, Section One, Authority, Purpose and Definitions, Section One Point Two, Definitions by Adding Definitions, Section Five, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards, Section Five Point Nine-Nine, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations, by amending subsection five point nine-nine point three, General Sitting Standards, adding subsection A two, Lot Requirements, by adding an exemption for solar tariff generation units in prime farmland, unique farmlands, and additional land of state importance, as detailed in the Planning Board's report to town meeting.
Second. Is there any discussion? Are questions?
If there's no questions, then I'm sorry, but I'm.
Wait, I'm going to, I'm going to have Mr. Abelson come up first.
Abelson, one-three-four Cold Hill. Could you tell us what you just said? I don't have the vaguest idea what you just told us.
Yeah, I have a good idea, but I'm going to defer.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Ken Comia, who is employed by the Granby Planning Board, who is a planner for PVPC, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
So we have a guest here tonight who's not a member, a town meeting member, but can explain this motion. So I need town meeting's permission to allow him to speak. So do I have first a motion to allow him to speak? And then a second? I need town meeting's majority to allow him to speak, so please raise your cards. I have a majority, thank you. So go ahead and speak.
Good evening, Ken Comia, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, sixty Congress Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. Having worked with the planning board on this particular zoning board, zoning bylaw amendment, this bylaw amendment, proposed bylaw amendment rectifies the conflict between the current zoning bylaws, which currently prohibits large-scale ground-mounted PV installations, solar arrays, on important agricultural farmlands and state regulations identified in the Massachusetts SMART program. The SMART program is the solar program that allows for incentivization of those solar projects. The Mass SMART program states that agricultural solar canopies shall be allowed on important agricultural farmland soils as the intent of the agricultural adder, which is the incentive, in which the Commonwealth incentivizes solar development. So basically, this particular bylaw amendment will create the exception for the solar development on those Massachusetts, on those important agricultural farmlands where they are currently prohibited, so that they match now the standards allowed in the SMART program.
Any further questions? From Mr. Comia? Thank you. Oh, Dr. Abelson, do you have another question for him?
Abelson, one-three-four Cold Hill. If they're important farmlands, why are we putting solar arrays on them? So maybe you could define what important farmlands are and why we can disregard important farmlands.
So important farmlands, based on the state's adjectives for, and definitions for those types of farmlands, are ones that are productive. The Mass SMART program, which is the solar incentivizing program for solar projects, does allow for adders to be used to incentivize the solar development on those types of parcels. And so with that said, if the state has identified the ability to develop on those particular parcels, keeping the parcel productive for the farmers that are going to use that, in addition to solar development, that is how they are incentivizing that. Granby, when it passed its zoning bylaw a couple of years ago, prohibited outright on all those types of farmlands. With that said, the SMART regulations do allow for incentivizing those particular lands within a parcel.
I'm going to have Mr. Fernia speak first, and I'll allow you to come up.
So just to clarify, so what we're, we're not talking about taking these important farmlands out of production. What we're talking about is we're enabling them to put a bigger solar unit on their property to help with their conversion to that, is that what we're saying?
It, it is a dual use, so they can continue to be productive farmlands, but at the same time, also utilize the property for solar projects.
Right, but you're not allowed to convert all of that farmland purely to solar?
No.
Okay.
Abelson, one-three-four Cold Hill. I'm sorry, I hate to be dense, but if we cover something up with solar panels, how are we going to make it productive farmland? Okay? And I, I'm not speaking against solar, I'm just trying to understand what we're talking about here, which doesn't seem altogether clear to me.
All right.
I can try to answer that. The Mass SMART program, as I've mentioned previously, incentivizes solar development. There is an ability, and the state has identified certain types of lands that can be used for solar development. Farmers and those that use their land for agricultural purposes have, through the process of public comment to the state, have identified that they would like to be able to develop solar on their lands, in addition to also using their lands for farming or for other agricultural purposes. So this is a mere correcting of the conflict that currently exists within the zoning bylaw that was passed a couple of years ago, to also now align with the regulations that exist at the state level.
Madam Moderator, Glenn Sexton, fifty-three Ameris Street. Ken, just so I understand what you're saying, so previously, the Mass SMART program regulations did not allow for this. Since then, they've changed, so we're actually changing our bylaws so that they reflect the changes that the state made in the SMART program, is that correct?
There were recent amendments, and I think it was late 2020. This came to the attention of the planning board by a member of the community that would like to develop solar on that property, which happens to have important agricultural farmlands. But you're right, Mr. Sexton, that is, that is true, that the state in late 2020 amended those to provide incentives for development of solar on those types of lands.
Do you have another question, or do you feel your question hasn't been answered?
Abelson, one-three-four Cold Hill. I feel like I'm belaboring this. I understand it's a zoning issue, I understand it's a money issue. And if a farmer wants to use his land to put solar in addition to farming, I'm all for that. Is that what we're talking about? Then why didn't we talk about it that way? Because that's the straightforward issue. It's having the ability to use your land the way you want to use it. It's a zoning issue and a money issue, not all this gobbledygook.
So now it's been simplified. In order for this motion to pass, it has to pass by a two-thirds majority. So this is really the reasons why we have the clickers, for the quicker speed of two-thirds majority. So... Start voting now. Voting's closed. The motion passes by a two-thirds majority, seventy-seven percent to thirty, seventy-seven percent to twenty-three percent. The moderator will now call on Mrs. Abbott to present the motion under Article Eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume Three, Chapter Twenty-One, Zoning Bylaws, Section One, Authority, Purpose and Definitions, Section One Point Two, Definitions by Adding Definitions, Volume Three, Chapter Twenty-One, Zoning Bylaws, Section Three, Use Regulations, Table One, Schedule of Uses, Three Point Two, Agricultural, Adding Three Point Two Point One Zero, Private Event Venues, and Section Five, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards, by adding Section Five Point One Four, Private Event Venue, Establishing Standards and Criteria for Permitting, as detailed in Planning Board's report to town meeting.
Can I have a second? Discussion. Come on up.
Heather Labonte, one-fifty-one Harris Street. I just wanted to comment that I've been working since 2019 for bylaw amendment on this, this warrant, to enable me to have outdoor events on my property on Harris Street. I want to share the beauty, not infringe on it, and I don't want to change it. I simply want to utilize the beautiful space as a business. I have since registered as a farm. I'm featuring our sugar shack with our maple syrup and educating anyone who is interested in sugaring. My events are, I'm proposing to use. My events are, I'm proposing to use tents only, they will be catered, facilities will be brought in. Everything that's brought in will again be brought out. It'll only be a part-time business, and I have the support of my neighbors. I want to share Granby off to other people who don't really know who we are, and I also am going to work with local vendors. I'm happy to share my plan with anyone who wants to hear it, and I look forward to the vote, and thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joe Funey, 154 Taylor Street. So with the private venue, so would, so if I was a farmer, would that allow me to have a concert on my property? If I'm, so with the private venue, are there any restrictions or anything, or does this give us more open opportunity to have more?
Speak to the microphone.
More open opportunity to generate revenue by having paid-for events and stuff, so?
You're correct. It does actually give more opportunities for that, but I'm a furthest candidate for the exact, you know, wording that we've changed, so.
We already have permission for you to speak, so you can speak to this question.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. So this new bylaw will introduce standards for large parcels, which currently, there are none, no conditions of development currently exist. So, the minimum parcel size shall be 10 acres in the residential single-family zoning district. So these are your large parcels. And it does create an opportunity for a property owner to come to the planning board for a special permit to address various types of events that they may want on their property. Their current, in this particular bylaw amendment, there are suggested, suggested criteria, a buffering of 200 feet on all sides of the property. So the applicant would need to come to the planning board meetings, apply for a special permit, and they would need to talk through their plan. So as the, one of the previous speakers spoke, any of those various amenities that would be provided through the event would be explained during a special permit public hearing. So in addition to the buffering, there's off-street parking that is required, a filing of plan that needs to be approved by the Board of Health, the fire department, police department, and a, an existing or planted agricultural crops to create some additional buffering. The site plan is in, which will be in accordance with the other, the other conditions of the current site plan bylaw that you have in the books, which require signage and lighting to meet those minimum requirements for a residential zoning district. And, yes, and any other structures or certain events may require additional permitting once, and if the planning board is to issue that special permit.
Okay, just a quick point clarification, but this is only agricultural lands?
It is only in any land that is identified in the residential, single-family zoning district, and you must have 10 acres of property, 10 acres of land to file a special permit.
So if I wanted to have a wedding in my backyard, I couldn't do it?
I think what ended up happening with regards to this particular bylaw being examined by the planning board is to address those properties wanting to be proactive in case there would be complaints by abutters for, regarding traffic or noise. So this is just to allow for those properties that happen to be large enough to have special events to allow, to do so with the town's approval.
Yeah, but what I don't understand is like, in my residential, I have an acre and a quarter, so because it's not 10 acres, I can't have a wedding or graduation party there, because that, wouldn't that be a private event under your definition or not?
Commander, Moderator. Ken, please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that is a private event, so we're allowed to have cookouts and stuff like that at our own houses. This is a business. That's what, that, is we operate it as a business. And when this came about, our bylaws at the time do not allow that to happen as a business. As a private resident, you're allowed to have get-togethers and things like that at your home. This is different, this is a business that's being run, and there's nothing in our bylaws that actually allowed that to happen.
That's correct.
I just don't see the word "business" in this. Am I missing something?
Private event venues?
Yeah, but wouldn't me having a wedding in my backyard be a private event?
It's not a venue.
Okay. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Any further questions? Come on up.
Joel Walker, 2 Pleasant Street. My only question is, what is the eventual plan? What are you planning? Are you planning to put up a venue for permanent, or is this going to be, you're going to have a concert every couple of years or something like that? But what are you going to do? What's the plan? I can't picture in my mind, you know, and I'm concerned also about, has the planning board reviewed this, and what do they say about it, about this?
The land would have the, the property owner of that particular parcel, if they met the minimum criteria, would be able to file a special permit with the planning board. So currently, none of these types of parcels exist. If, for instance, the previous speaker wanted to, assuming that the, if the town passes the bylaw, the previous speaker would go through the special permit process, which is a public hearing, which all the abutters would be notified, according, in accordance with Chapter 4, Chapter 40A. And those types of conversations between abutters and the town and the town departments would be examined at the public hearing. So there is an opportunity that the conversations about what types of events would occur on that parcel would be opened up during that public hearing process.
Come on up, Joel.
Joel Walker, 2 Pleasant Street. I would just...
Can you speak into the microphone, or lift it, one or the other?
Before I vote for this, I'd want to, want to know what the planning board, what their idea is, because, I mean, there are a lot of things that this is going to affect, such as traffic, and I don't know what the other things are, and I'd like to, you know, have the planning board look at it.
Do you want, do you want to answer that?
Sure.
The planning board, at its public hearing to address this particular zoning bylaw amendment, did motion to bring this to town meeting. The planning board would have its, have a responsibility of, if the town, if the bylaw is passed, would have a responsibility of overseeing any permit applications for these types of uses at a future public hearing. So, yes, the, the planning board has, I think, discussed the types of events that could happen on these larger parcels. Again, they, they motioned to bring it to the town meeting for the town's approval. But if the town approves this, then the town, then property owners that have the minimum, meet the minimum criteria, if they wanted to use those particular pieces of land for this type of new use, would have to go through a process that involved the planning board for its special permit approval.
Come on up.
Brenda Knight, 63, Kendall Street. I've never done this before, but I support Heather. I really do, and her husband. Their property is beautiful. It's been in their family for many, many years. It, I believe, was farming way back. Now it's time to take a step forward in our town, have a place like this. If it doesn't work, it won't work. If it does work, we're grateful for that. Let's give it a try.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, if I might, just so, because I was on the planning board when this came forward some years ago, and the, the planning board did look at it and look at all the conditions that possibly could come forward with that, too. And we also looked at surrounding towns, what surrounding towns are allowing. A lot of different venues are out there as far as like weddings being held in barns and things like that. Those towns have provided the residents with the opportunity, same as us, through their, through their system to allow them to have that. And I think us allowing us or our town residents gives us the opportunity to be like other towns are as well. And when it comes in front of the planning board, that's the board that's going to look at it and look at, as Ken spoke about, all the different things that might come into play, such as traffic, is a police officer needed to direct traffic, you know, what other things are needed at that particular time before the special permit is issued for them to have that event. And it's case by case. It's not, it's just not saying you can have any event you want, whenever you want. This is, just gives them the opportunity, allows them to have it, but there's also the conditions that the planning board will put into place through the special permit.
Just one last comment, because I'm looking at the attachment, and it says, "Private event venue with site or facility approved by the Town of Granby to conduct private events by renting or leasing to private parties on a commercial basis." So I just wanted to get back to my point.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I just want to get back to my point, that if I wanted to have a wedding on my property, as long as I wasn't charging somebody else to do it, I have the right to do that. I have the right to have a graduation party, I don't have to come and ask permission, I don't have to do any of that. Is that correct?
Can one of the planning board?
Yes, I think another idea with regards to the particular definition that's used here is that when identified by the Town of Granby, there is a filing of that particular property as a business, because it is operating as a business.
Do you have something further to add? Come on up.
Anne Cody, 13 Acre Brook. I've born, been born and raised in this town my whole life. I graduated with Heather, I know her very well. She has a beautiful property over on Harris Mountain. I personally have been to three different weddings in Vermont and New Hampshire that are exactly what she's proposing to do. It's a beautiful venue, it's a great business opportunity for this town. In my 54 years of living here, Granby has not exactly been very helpful when businesses are trying to get started, and I'm frankly tired of it. If we don't wake up and allow businesses to come into our town, we're going to drown. We can't afford what we're doing right now. We have to be more open-minded. Heather's got a great plan, she went to college for it. She's not just saying, "I want to have a big party." She wants to hold beautiful weddings and events on her property with respect to her neighbors, with respect to the buffers and everything she's going to need. She's not going into this closed-minded and just, let's just have a big party. She wants to make a nice business opportunity out of it for herself, and I for one support her 110 percent. And I think this town really needs to start supporting small business so that we have a tax base.
Thank you. So I'm actually going to move the question and start voting on this, unless anyone has something different that hasn't been said already?
I'm sorry, but are we generating taxes on this? Or are we just generating a fee? Because that's a different thing about business. Like you, I'm all for everybody having opportunities, whether it's these venues, medical marijuana that we don't want to promote, we don't really have an infrastructure, but are we generating tax revenue, or are we generating fees from allowing businesses to run a business like this?
I guess it's how you look at it, the whole entire process. Obviously, if the individual, and I'm not going to signal anybody out, but has a business, there are taxes that they will pay. Bringing other people through our town may suggest they stop at, you know, if you will, Cumberland Farms or something like that for gas, or start, stop there for something else, but also gives them a chance to maybe see our town, and maybe decide to move to our town as well. So I think it's, it's a twofold particular piece here, it's just not about a business, but it's also introducing our town to other people. As I believe Ms. Cody spoke about, New Hampshire or Vermont, that's what some of these other towns are doing, that's what I kind of said earlier, in my comment, was that other towns are doing this and allowing this to, to happen. And I said, you know, with barns and things like that and different venues they're allowing to happen, it's introducing different people to their towns, but also having that advantage, bringing different people through the town where they spend money in the town at certain places.
All right, in order for the motion to pass under Article 11, it has to pass by a two-thirds majority. Start voting. Is it, okay. Hold on. Okay, start again. And voting is now closed. Yeah. The motion passes by a two-thirds majority, 95 percent yay, 5 percent no. The moderator now calling Ms. Abbott to present the motion under Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 3, Chapter 21, Zoning Bylaw, Section 6, Administration and Enforcement, Subsection 6.3, Site Plan Approval, Amending Subsection 6.32, Application to Clarify Citation and Prepare Review Services, 6.34 Procedures for Site Plan Review to Update Procedures for Efficiency, Removing 6.36 Final Action, Renumbering Enforcement to 6.36, and Adding 6.37 Appeal, With All Revisions Creating a More Efficient Subjective Site Plan Review Process, as detailed in the Planning Board's Report to Town Meeting.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion or questions? Come on up, Dr. Abelson.
Abelson 134 Cold Hill. You referred to the planning board's report to town meeting.
Dr. Abelson, can you speak into the microphone?
You refer to the planning board's report to town meeting, right? Do we have that, or is that?
It's in one of the handouts.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Didn't see it. I will go and read it.
Is there any further questions? Is there any further questions? All right. In order for the motion under Article 12 to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. I can't see it. So start voting now. Well, it's great for annual, at the annual town meeting. We're just, it's just two of us up here. And it's... Start voting. Yeah, we have something wrong with the connection. All right, so for this one, we're going to do a card vote. Probably lost connection. All right, can I have the counters come out? All right, all those in favor of the motion under Article 12, please raise your cards and keep them up until I tell you to put them down. Although I don't necessarily think I'm ready to counters at this point. You can put your cards down. All those against the motion of Article 12? So the motion passes unanimously. So the moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Second? All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you.